I know the clock on the wall says 5:57. Where's my gavel? I don't have it. I don't have it. No, I don't need it and I don't have it. Thank you. I know the clock on the wall says 5:58, but I've been told that clock's wrong and by my watch it's actually 6:01. So I will call the April meeting of the Mayor and Council to order. Our first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republi-- wish to standers, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Bridges, would you do our invocation? Would you please stand?
Let us go to God in prayer. Dear great God of heaven, thank you Father God for this day. Thank you Lord for guiding us, leading us in everything that you have us to do, Lord. As we go forth through this meeting tonight, that we would do things decency and in order and to lead our community as we should. These and all other blessings, in your dear son, Jesus Christ's name, we all do pray. Let every heart say amen.
Do we have any? We don't have any citizens comments. Okay. We don't have any citizens comments at this time, so you all have a copy of the March meetings minutes. Do I have a motion to approve those?
So move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the March 2024 meetings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is the Mayor and Council announcements and comments. We'll start with Councilman Bridges.
I'm good.
You're good? Councilman Ogden.
I went to the mountain bike park opening this past weekend and couldn't ask for a nicer day and a nicer facility. How exciting that is. There was a good crowd there. It's out at Lake Shore Park if you haven't seen it. It's a great new asset for our city and I hope everyone enjoys it.
Ms. Stacy.
Good evening. I echo Councilman Ogden's.
I always forget that. I was at the ribbon cutting as well and it is a great facility. And I would also like to say that I hope you will go by and see the art that is on display at Niva Lomason. I was there for the presentation of that as well. And it just goes once again to show how fortunate we are here in Carrollton with so many things to do and so many cultural representations. So, thank you. Councilman Miller there?
Well, it looks like we got a good crowd tonight. Must not be anything on TV till about 9:20, is that right? I don't know how many of you are basketball fans, but I've enjoyed watching both the men's and women's this year and, you know, we'll see what happens tonight. But beautiful day and I hope everyone had a good day. We'll hopefully have a good meeting here tonight.
Well, I hope everybody got to see the what was of the eclipse today. Another item in history. They said the next one would be 2044, so that's going to be a way. Some of these younger kids might be around to enjoy it. But I want to say how excited I am about our mountain bike trails. Those are really good and those have been with the assistance of the Atlanta Trail Bike Club. They've come out and helped in the development of that and that's really good. That's going to offer another activity for our community. And it's from my understanding that it's a real hot item. There's a lot of people that like to do the mountain bike trails. And also, they're going to, for those who, like me, don't know how to ride mountain bike trails, they will do classes for y'all and the kids. And so there again, another activity for our children. And I just want to say that I appreciate, as Stacy said, the cultural diversity we have here with all the programs that we offer in the city. And as we go around to different places and different meetings with different cities, we're very blessed here in Carrollton, in Carroll County, to have the programs that we do have because a lot of places don't have them. And we're growing and we're going to offer more and more. And I really do appreciate the job that our employees do in bringing things to our city. Okay, Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to say, spring is in the air and with that comes all of our spring and summer events. I'm excited about that. I know our staff has been working very hard to make sure that we've got a very vibrant spring and summer. We've had our first art takeover already and then we kick off with May Fest, the first weekend in May. I think we got maybe alumni weekend before then with Atlanta Vice playing in the amp. So it's fixing to get really busy with a lot of fun stuff to do during the spring and summer months and just excited to be a part of it.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda items for consideration. Do I have a motion to approve these items for consideration?
So move.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. The next item on the agenda gives me great pride. We are going to recognize our Carrollton High School debate team, who are the 2024 state champions again for the fourth year in a row. And I think... And this is a great group of young people and they represent us so well and they do so much other than just the debate. They had during Women's History Month, they invited us ladies down and we had some questions and hopefully to inspire them. And of course, they inspire us all the time with what all the things they do and the activities and their education and outside activities. So we're very proud of them and of course, the coaches and the administrative staff that support them all. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the certificate of recognition and then I'll call your name and we'll all line up here because I'm sure we'll want some pictures. Carrollton High School Debate Team, 2024 Georgia Forensic Coaches Association Varsity State Champions. Whereas it gives the Mayor and Council a tremendous amount of pleasure and pride to express to all the members of Carrollton High School's debate team, coaches and parents, our sincere congratulations for winning the 2024 Georgia Forensic Coaches Association Varsity State Championship for the fourth year in a row. And whereas the team has a history of bringing honor to Carrollton High School and the city of Carrollton having won 14 state championships, the second highest number of state championships earned by any competitive team in the school's history, and seven second place state titles. And whereas you are to be commended in achieving excellence in the field of debate, now therefore, we are pleased to publicly recognize the following members of the Carrollton High School Debate Team, under the guidance of Coach Richard Bracknell and Coach Lindsey Oliver, as the 2024 Georgia Forensic Coaches Association Varsity State Champions. And Mr. Brooks, do we have a list?
The list is right there.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you'd read out the names, I'd go present them, but you can just hand it over to me.
I'll hand you the last one.
Okay. All right. So when your name's called, I'll meet you down front.
Congratulations, Coach Bracknell and the debate team, Ms. Oliver. And as I call your name, you come forward and Mayor Kasen will give you your certificate of recognition. I apologize in advance if I mess anybody's name up, but I think I got them all here. All right, Audrey Browning. Zoe Bush. Alan T. Hawkins. James Hauser. Andrew Johnson. Kieran Kelly. Eden Long. John Will Roberson. Wright Rowanick. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsey Oliver. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell.
things decency and in order and to lead our community as we should. These and all other blessings in your dear son, Jesus Christ's name, we all do pray. Let every heart say amen.
Amen. Do we have any? We don't have any citizens comments. Okay. We don't have any citizens comments at this time, so you all have a copy of the March meetings minutes. Do I have a motion to approve those?
So move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the March two thousand twenty-four meetings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is the mayor and council announcements and comments. We'll start with Councilman Bridges.
I'm good.
You're good? Councilman Ogden?
I went to the mountain bike park opening this past weekend and couldn't ask for a nicer day and a nicer facility. How exciting that is. There was a good crowd there. It's out at Lake Shore Park. If you haven't seen it, it's a great new asset for our city and I hope everyone enjoys it.
Ms. Stacy?
Oh, good evening. I echo Councilor Ogden's.
I always forget that. I was at the ribbon cutting as well and it is a great facility. And I would also like to say that I hope you will go by and see the art that is on display at Niva Lomason. I was there for the presentation of that as well. And it just goes once again to show how fortunate we are here in Carrollton with so many things to do and so many cultural representations. So, thank you. Councilwoman Ogleman?
Well, it looks like we got a good crowd tonight. Must not be anything on TV till about nine twenty, is that right? I don't know how many of you are basketball fans, but I've enjoyed watching both the men's and women's this year and, you know, we'll see what happens tonight. But beautiful day and I hope everyone had a good day. We'll hopefully have a good meeting here tonight.
Well, I hope everybody got to see the what was of the eclipse today. Another item in history. They said the next one would be two thousand forty-four, so that's going to be a way some of these younger kids might be around to enjoy it. But I want to say how excited I am about our mountain bike trails. Those are really good and those have been with the assistance of the Atlanta Trail Bike Club. They've come out and helped in the development of that and that's really good. That's going to offer another activity for our community. And it's from my understanding that it's a real hot item. There's a lot of people that like to do the mountain bike trails. And also they're going to, for those who, like me, don't know how to ride mountain bike trails, they will do classes for y'all and the kids. And so there again, another activity for our children. And I just want to say that I appreciate, as Stacy said, the cultural diversity we have here with all the programs that we offer in the city. And as we go around to different places and different meetings with different cities, we're very blessed here in Carrollton, in Carroll County, to have the programs that we do have because a lot of places don't have them. And we're growing and we're going to offer more and more. And I really do appreciate the job that our employees do in bringing things to our city. Okay. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to say, spring is in the air and with that comes all of our spring and summer events. I'm excited about that. I know our staff has been working very hard to make sure that we've got a very vibrant spring and summer. We've had our first art takeover already and then we kick off with May Fest, first weekend in May. I think we got maybe alumni weekend before then with Atlanta Vice playing in the amp. So it's fixing to get really busy with a lot of fun stuff to do during the spring and summer months and just excited to be a part of it.
Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda items for consideration. Do I have a motion to approve these items for consideration?
So move.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. The next item on the agenda gives me great pride. We are going to recognize our Carrollton High School debate team, who are the twenty twenty-four state champions again for the fourth year in a row. And I think... And this is a great group of young people and they represent us so well and they do so much other than just the debate. They had during Women's History Month, they invited us ladies down and we had some questions and hopefully to inspire them. And of course, they inspire us all the time with what all the things they do and the activities and their education and outside activities. So we're very proud of them and of course, the coaches and the administrative staff that support them all. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the certificate of recognition and then I'll call your name and we'll all line up here because I'm sure we'll want some pictures. Carrollton High School Debate Team, twenty twenty-four Georgia Forensic Coaches Association Varsity State Champions. Whereas it gives the mayor and council a tremendous amount of pleasure and pride to express to all the members of Carrollton High School's debate team, coaches and parents, our sincere congratulations for winning the twenty twenty-four Georgia Forensic Coaches Association Varsity State Championship for the fourth year in a row. And whereas the team has a history of bringing honor to Carrollton High School and the City of Carrollton having won fourteen state championships, the second highest number of state championships earned by any competitive team in the school's history, and second, seven second place state titles. And whereas you are to be commended in achieving excellence in the field of debate, now therefore, we are pleased to publicly recognize the following members of the Carrollton High School Debate Team, under the guidance of Coach Richard Bracknell and Coach Lindsay Oliver as the twenty twenty-four Georgia Forensic Coaches Association Varsity State Champions. And Mr. Brooks, do we have a list?
The list is right there.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you'd read out the names, I'd go present them, but you can just hand it over to me.
I'll hand you the last one.
Okay. All right. So when your name's called, I'll meet you down front.
Congratulations, Coach Bracknell and the debate team, Ms. Oliver. And as I call your name, you come forward and Mayor Kason will give you your certificate of recognition. I apologize in advance if I mess anybody's name up, but I think I got them all here. All right. Audrey Browning. Zoe Bush. Alan T. Hawkins. James Hauser. Andrew Johnson. Kieran Kelly. Eden Long. John Will Roberson. Wright Rowanick. And Luke Zimmer. Coach Richard Bracknell. Coach Lindsay Oliver.
All right. Y'all want to come down? I have to put some of the shorter ones on front and so we can get in with all the mayor council. How many seniors do we have?
Like half the body. She'll put some powder on my slide.
Congratulations on this all. That's the fun part of our job. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the Resolution oh five, twenty twenty-four Georgia Cities Week. Do I have a motion to? Okay, thanks. Resolution five dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution of the City of Carrollton recognizing Georgia Cities Week, April twenty first through twenty seventh, twenty twenty-four, and encouraging all residents to support the celebration and corresponding activities. Whereas city government is the closest to most citizens and the one with the most direct daily impact upon its residents. And whereas city government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public comment to and understanding of its many responsibilities. And whereas city government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along their understanding of public services and the benefits. And whereas Georgia Cities Week is a time to recognize the important role played by city government in our lives. Whereas this week offers an important opportunity to spread the word to all the citizens of Georgia that they can shape and influence this branch of government, which is closest to the people. And whereas the Georgia Municipal Association and its member cities have joined together to teach students and their citizens about municipal government through a variety of different projects and information. And whereas Georgia Cities Weeks offers an important opportunity to convey to all the citizens of Georgia that they can shape and influence government through their civic involvement. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Carrollton declares April twenty first through twenty seventh, twenty twenty-four, a Georgia Cities Week. Be it further resolved that the City of Carrollton encourages all city citizens, city government official employees, to do everything possible to ensure that this week is recognized and celebrated accordingly, adopted this eighth day of April, twenty twenty-four. Okay. So do I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Resolution adopted. All right. The next item on our agenda is thirty-one thirteen twenty-one Leaven Road. Ms. Studdard?
Yes, this item is an item that's been tabled the last couple of months, but it is a rezoning request to a, for a property at thirteen twenty-one Leaven Road. And the request is to revise a condition at thirteen twenty-one Leaven Road. And the request is to rezone fourteen point seven eight acres located at thirteen twenty-one Leaven Road. And they're requesting this from residential PD to a revised residential PD in order to convert an existing apartment complex from student housing to traditional apartment housing and increase the number of units while actually decreasing the number of bedrooms. The recommendation was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their January meeting and they did recommend approval with the following conditions. Number one, twenty-four hour site, on-site management shall be required. Number two, the installation of flock cameras at the entrance of the development shall be installed. Security cameras in the parking area shall be installed. Number four, participation in the multifamily housing inspection program is mandatory. Number five, a thousand feet of green belt spurs shall be installed along Leaven Road towards the Carrollton Green Belt Crossing at Leaven Road. And the number six, the unit matrix shall not exceed two hundred and seventy-two total units. This, like I said, this recommendation was an eight to zero vote and I do believe the applicants are here if you have any questions.
Okay. Before we have any response to this rezoning request, I'm going to read something and this is going to apply to all the rezoning requests we have tonight because we have one, two, three, four, five, six. At this time, we will hear rezoning requests. Since many of you may not have previously attended a public hearing on a zoning request, I want to quickly review our procedure. No person in attendance shall speak unless formally recognized. Upon rising to speak, each person recognized shall state their name and home address. Speakers must not employ tactics of intimidation, profanity, or threats of violence in their comment. All comments shall be directed to the mayor and council, not to the petitioner or those in opposition. In accordance with the law of Georgia, each side, not each individual, is allowed ten total minutes of public input. This means that all of those speaking in favor of the request have a total of ten minutes and all those speaking in opposition to the request have a total of ten minutes. Time devoted to questions and answers that elected officials may ask should not be counted against the time limitations. Since we do have limited time, please try to avoid restating what another may have already stated. The applicant shall be allowed to speak first in order to present the application. Others may then speak indicating first their support for or opposition to the application. The applicant will then be allowed a time for rebuttal. Rebuttal must be limited to points or issues raised by the opponents to the application of the hearing, at the hearing, sorry. Okay. Bet y'all didn't know you were going to have story time tonight, did you? Okay. All right. So our applicant is Rail Gauge Partners and I understand they are here. Maybe I need to remind everybody to turn their phones off. Okay.
Evening. My name is Zach Schomburg. We'd like to hand out, can we hand out some?
Sure.
Your time started.
My name is Zach Schomburg. I live at forty-seven Interlochen Road, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three four two.
Will Kilgore. I live at forty-six ten Jet Ridge Drive, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three two seven.
Mayor and council, good evening and thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Zach Schomburg and I'm joined by my business partner, Will Kilgore. We are both principals and founders of Rail Gauge Partners. Will and I have combined experience of forty years in real estate and have always focused on multifamily. Our firm is Atlanta-based and we acquire, develop, and operate multifamily apartments. Prior to founding Rail Gauge in twenty twenty-three, Will and I were founding partners of Mesa Capital in twenty-ten, along with two other partners, and Mesa was also focused on multifamily. During our Mesa tenure, Will and I executed the acquisition and development of over fifteen thousand multifamily units. I mention our background to confirm that both of us who stand before you today are well experienced in multifamily. Our former co-partners are worth mentioning, Mr. Jeff Tucker and Mr. Tom Bell. Some of you may know Mr. Bell, a highly respected businessman, formerly CEO of Cousins, a publicly traded company headquartered in Atlanta. After a decade of leadership at Cousins, Mr. Bell was our partner for the previous thirteen years. Our Mesa investors are also worth mentioning, ten high net worth individuals who were our only investors for all thirteen years. I need not mention their names, but several are recognizable because of their executive roles at many major U.S. public companies. I mention our former partners and investors because we know that our track record and reputation are important to this community. We have tremendous respect within the industry and are committed to quality projects and superior execution. In short, Will and I have completed numerous multifamily projects, including new Class A developments and numerous value-add repositions. The project I'm here to discuss this evening is the West Woods Student Apartments, a value-add reposition located here in Carrollton, Georgia. As you know, West Woods is a hundred and sixty-unit student housing community rented by the bedroom to students and only to students. The asset is physically and financially distressed and currently provides little to no benefit to this community. Rail Gauge is proposing to reposition this asset to market rate apartments so that it can and will provide significant benefit to this community. To do this, we are asking the council to support our rezoning application, which seeks to remove a condition of zoning which currently requires it to remain a student rental community. We also request the total number of units permitted to be increased from one hundred and sixty units to two hundred and seventy-two units so that we can convert many of the four-bedroom units to one and two-bedroom units. This reposition includes a twelve million dollar capital investment in the property. This investment will convert four-bedroom units and completely renovate the building exteriors and amenities, including the clubhouse and pool, fitness facility, remote coworking offices, and coffee bar lounge. It will include a dog park and walking trails around an existing pond. Upon completion, this asset will be among the nicest, if not the nicest, Class A market rate apartments in Carrollton. Some key facts about this community. It's existing. It's built and it's a problem. We are not asking to build new apartments. We are asking to make existing apartments better and have more value to this community. The property is operationally and financially distressed. It is not economically viable as a student housing community. Point three, it is and has been approximately fifty percent or less occupied for over two years and not all current residents are students. Current ownership has stopped spending money on the asset and it suffers from significant deferred maintenance. The tenant profile who currently lives there is tenuous and declining. There is documented history of crime and safety issues. Last year, twenty twenty-three, two hundred and ninety-eight police calls, two hundred and nine of which were nine-one-one initiated. Incidents of those, eight shots fired, sixteen armed robbery, three assault calls, thirty-four domestic violence incidents, and nine significant fights. And finally, if our request is not approved and we are not able to move forward, West Woods may be foreclosed on or certainly sold to a low bidder, low bid buyer because a student community is simply not viable. In January, eight members of the Planning Commission, including the chairman, vice chairman, six other commissioners unanimously voted eight to zero recommending approval of this request with conditions. We presented our business plan for the asset to the commission at that meeting and have since provided the same business plan to numerous local stakeholders, including the mayor, council members, the city manager, the Carrollton Chamber President, planning staff, business leaders, leadership at the University of West Georgia, the Carrollton School Board, and the Carrollton School Superintendent. Through this outreach, we were made aware of a few stakeholder and planning staff concerns. We would like to take this opportunity to address these concerns. There are three specific stakeholder concerns and two planning staff concerns I would like to address. Stakeholder concern one, paraphrasing, a stakeholder said Carrollton cannot have another community like the Bristol Lake Apartments. In our community engagement, one stakeholder whom we met personally noted that Carrollton cannot have another Bristol Lake Apartments. And it was clear his rest, West Woods rezoning concern appeared to be primarily formed by the negative impacts of Bristol Lakes on the Carrollton community and Carrollton school system. The nefarious activity that's occurred at Bristol Lakes, including assault, burglary, and even shootings, is despicable and unacceptable. However, when you consider Bristol Lakes, it is very clear that the ownership history of that community is what led to the negative impact. Bristol Lakes was initially foreclosed on, subsequently sold to seventy different individuals for as low as twenty-five thousand per unit. Rent subsidy programs were introduced, no management was hired, rules were broken, enforcement was impossible, and it spiraled out of control. The circumstances with West Woods are very different and we do not believe it is fair to compare our West Woods conversion to Bristol Lakes. In addition, we believe we are offering a viable solution to prevent the West Woods asset from being foreclosed on similar to Bristol Lakes. Rather than respond with, trust us, these things won't happen at West Woods, Will and I crafted and proposed eight specific conditions which address, prevent, and mitigate these concerns, making it impossible for the same outcome. The eight conditions that were proposed, that we are proposing are in addition to the five conditions the Planning Commission recommended. I'd like to present and read all thirteen conditions to mayor and council. Let me present our conditions. All tenants shall be income qualified and with a minimum total income of two times annual rent. Tenant identity and income shall be verified. One unit shall be set aside and offered at fifty percent rent to a city or county-employed police officer. The project shall be restricted from conversion to condominium units or any form of individual fee simple ownership. The project shall be restricted from participating in HUD or any rent assistance subsidized program. And legal occupancy shall be enforced in one, two, and three-bedroom units. Unlike Bristol Lakes, these conditions require that West Woods be owned by a single owner who can be held accountable and prevent any form of subsidized housing. Stakeholder concern two, how are we assured the renovation will be completed? If approved, Rail Gauge will be using debt and equity to acquire the asset and fund renovations. Our lender requires that we personally guarantee completion of all improvements. Stakeholder concern three, paraphrasing, how are we assured that West Woods owners will be good future operators? Our plan will take more than six years to implement. The asset will not make sense or viable to sell until we fully execute this plan and complete all improvements. If there was a conveyance in the future, the best way to assure this, the best way to assure future owners are equally capable is to invest significant capital in the asset and create a viable business. One stakeholder expressed concern Rail Gauge is an out-of-town owner and that's a concern. At the same time, others have identified three other communities here in Carrollton that provide attractive rental housing. The Mayfair, owned by Woodward Management, based in Atlanta. The View at Carrollton, owned by Fogelman, based in Memphis. The Foundry, owned by Aspen Square, owned by a group out of Boston, Massachusetts. None of these entities are local, but important to note, all our good owner operators whom have good relation, whom we know, like we planned to do with West Woods, each has invested significant capital into these assets, created a desirable place to live. created a desirable place to live, and professionally managed their asset.
Sir, that's time you need to wrap it up.
Planning staff, they have raised the concern that a market-rate reposition does not align with the 2023 comp plan. Comprehensive plans are a great tool for many cities, adopt to guide growth to cities.
Sir, you're gonna have to, you asked your 10 minutes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this? Okay, all right. Do y'all have any questions?
They do.
They do.
I'd like to hear from them for just a minute, if we could. Sir, I've got a question for you. We've been told by the Rail Gauge people that this property is headed for foreclosure. Is that your assessment as well?
I would stop short of saying it's going to head to foreclosure. What I would suggest is, let me just, can I speak for a minute in support of, and let me just explain everyone who I am.
Well, I've, yeah, the 10 minutes is for...
Oh, that's for support too?
Yeah, for the support of the project. I'm asking you a specific question is, is the economics of that property going to force you to go into foreclosure?
Yeah, what I will say is that the asset right now is worth less than the value of the debt. So it's effectively underwater. That's a viable outcome right now. The asset's sitting about 50%, and unfortunately, the supply-demand imbalance in the market, just given declining enrollment and increase in supply of student beds, has caused the asset to have some operational challenges.
What other assets? Do y'all own multiple student housing apartment complexes?
Yes, the company that I work for, and I'm the representative of ownership here, does own many assets across the country.
Okay, so y'all have got many assets across the country. Are all of them in distress at this point?
No, they're not.
Okay, so why would y'all risk your credit ability by letting this complex go back to the bank when you have multiple assets across the country?
Yeah, well, I, those are, it's kind of, those assets are irrespective of this asset in and of itself. So foundationally, this is likely the best outcome for the asset itself. It's, the going concern as a student housing asset just doesn't, it's not viable. And so the best outcome is to find someone, a company who has the means to invest capital that's needed to improve the property, like the gentlemen at Rail Gauge have presented. Frankly, it's in the best interest of the community, and that's why I'm here supporting it. Because, look, at the end of the day, we're not profiting on this at all. We think this is the best interest of the investment. We've seen that it's become a bit of a blighted asset due to some of the supply-demand imbalance. And as, you know, again, experienced owner-operators around the country, we knew that the best outcome was to find a new capital provider who could come in and, again, with committed capital, invest in it.
Okay, do you only own student assets? The company you work for owns student assets?
No, we own assets across other sectors as well.
Okay, so you, your company owns other multifamily assets across the country?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anybody else have a question? Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this? Okay, all right, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion. Either approve or deny the request.
Mayor, personally, I've been in the real estate business for a number of years myself, and I've made some mistakes along the way. And each and every time that I did, I was the one that had to pay for my mistakes. And I feel like that the current owner is not taking responsibility for that property right now. I think that maybe they should be looking for a different management for that complex, and I'm not in favor of changing the zoning on this property at this time.
Is that your motion, Mr. Rivera?
That's my motion, is to deny the request.
All right, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Okay, the rezoning request is denied. Okay, the next rezoning request is 215 and 219 Loveren Road from C2 General Commercial to M1 Light Industry.
The next item on your agenda is a rezoning request. It's a rezoning request from C2 to M1 with a waiver to allow for retail sales and service as a permitted use in addition to that light industrial use. The Planning Commission reviewed this request at their March Planning Commission meeting, and they made a recommendation to approve with the following conditions. Number one, the Maple Street overlay sign regulation shall apply to any new signage on the property. And number two, any proposed retail sales and service use must obtain approval of the mayor and council prior to the issuance of a business license. And they did make this recommendation unanimously, five to zero. And I do believe the applicant or the applicant's representative is here if you have questions.
All right. Mr. Rivera?
We're requesting this property be, Orlando Rivera. My address is 108 Comely Rich Drive.
And I'm Rhett Harmon. My address is 198 Bohannon Road here in Carrollton. Let me go ahead?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, perfect. So obviously, we're here for a rezoning request. This property was, as far as that, always been an industrial-type property. And I believe somewhere around 2013, I think we figured out that the owner that bought the comic book store there is on the corner next to this. So it was all, it was basically one large property that was divided into three, and he needed the zoning for C2 to open the comic book store because it didn't allow for that. Orlando purchased in 2014, didn't really understand what the zoning was or wasn't there, and he's kind of operated as both. He had international equipment that was there for many years and had a retail side there that was, it was kind of built out for retail kitchen wares. And then the other side was, you know, just industrial warehouse with loading docks and stuff like that. So he's since retired in the last year, and we do have a tenant that's in there. And it just made more sense to have this be able to work as the building was kind of functionally designed as industrial, but also having that, that limited use, limited use of having a retail business made a lot of sense for the way that the property is laid out and designed. So all the recommendations that the city put in place, we agree with, and I think that's about it.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody here to speak in opposition of this rezoning request? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, did you have something?
No, I was gonna make a motion, we approve it.
Okay, all right, have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Hearing none, motion carries, rezoning request granted. Okay, the next rezoning request is 101 Alice Lane from R20 Single Family Resident, 20,000 square foot, to R15 Single Family Residents, 15 square feet. The applicant is Mr. Bob Uglum. Okay, Erica?
Councilman Uglum, you may want to step out.
Give me just one second. 150-page agenda, let's get a little cumbersome when you've got them all written out. All right, the next item on your agenda is a rezoning request from Single Family Residential R20 to Single Family Residential R15, and the request is at 101 Alice Lane. The purpose of the request is to take a lot located at the intersection of Highland Avenue and Alice Lane and basically subdivide it into two lots to allow for a lot for an infill, single-family construction home. The Planning Commission reviewed this request at their March meeting, and they unanimously recommended the approval, five to zero. In your packets and through our correspondence, we have put together a list of proposed design standards for the newly created lot on Alice Lane. Haley? That's right. And those conditions are being proposed kind of in lieu of providing a house plan, just in case the applicants choose to sell the lot. They haven't 100% decided what types of conditions or what types of, what type of house plan they want to build on this lot. And so those design standards are really kind of proposed in lieu of that, providing the house plan itself. And I do believe the applicants here, if you have any questions.
My name is Mike Corton. I live at 128 Millstream Court. And Bob and I purchased this several months ago from the family. The house had sit vacant, from what we hear from the neighbors, maybe a year or so. It's a big lot, almost an acre. The perimeter of the property has grown up with large trees that actually need major work because the neighbors say, well, yeah, we're gonna get rid of the jungles. Cutting the lot in half will get rid of some of the jungles. We cleaned up a ton of it. It'll actually, you know, add a 400-grand, 450-grand house to that neighborhood over there, which would, I think, raise the prices even more. It's a great neighborhood.
Mike, how large did you say the lot was?
I thought it was close to an acre, like .8 or something like that. Is that right?
Oh, okay. Point seven, okay.
Point seven, sorry. And it has a, like a 1,600-square-foot building in the rear.
Yeah.
And we were gonna subdivide the lot to include the building. So the building will be part of the lot that we subdivide. The building has...
The building will be on the new lot? Is that, the building that's existing will be on the new lot?
Correct, it's in the back corner of the property. I don't know what was manufactured in the building, but it has 1,600 feet, and it has like 50 outlets in the ceiling. It would make a great marijuana-growing facility. But we'll let the new guy figure that one out.
That's not based on personal experience, that's just an opinion.
I just read about it somewhere.
And, okay, all right, is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this request? And Erica, this meets all the setback requirements and lot sizes that are required.
Well, until we get the actual house footprint, but yes, it will meet the, as a lot, it meets the dimensional requirements.
Okay, all right, okay. All right, so I will entertain a motion to grant the rezoning request of 101 Alice Lane. Do I have a motion? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Okay, the next rezoning request...
Let's take Councilman Uglum out of timeout.
Yeah, we'll let him come back.
Okay, our next one is 103 Carroll Circle and 105 Burns Road.
Yes, the next item on your agenda is a rezoning request to a residential PD at 103 Carroll Circle and 105 Burns Road. The request is to rezon these two tracks in order to construct eight single-family residential detached dwellings at the corner of Carroll Circle and Burns Road. The Planning Commission reviewed this request at their March Planning Commission meeting, and they unanimously recommended approval, five to zero. The site plan, Haley, if you want to call up the site plan on page 82. The site plan indicates that the homes will be fronted on both Burns Road and Carroll Circle, and the applicant is here if you have any additional questions.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Brian Preston. I reside at 4135 East Highway 166 in Carrollton. I'm really excited about this project. We did the project right across the road from here, Kayak Cove. That most dean was an unbuildable one-acre piece of dirt. And we also have been held responsible for draining the lake. I've got numerous emails from people saying, "Why did you drain the lake?" And I said, "We didn't drain the lake." But we felt like that was a great project, a great value-add project, bringing some intentional development over in, along the Bankhead Corridor. And this project is right across the road from that, and these will be fee simple. Originally, we were, we were trying to get 10 in there just to make the numbers work, but we just felt like that wasn't gonna look right, so we reduced our ask from eight to 10. So we also have some to-scale dwellings of what these houses will look like. They're all 1,400 square feet. I think that's maybe the next one over, Haley. We think it's a great project. We're locals, too. We, I walked here from my office, you know, so we're not out-of-town builders. We really care about the city. We're trying to add value to the city. We're trying to do great intentional products and projects to add value to the city.
Brian, we'll share in the responsibility of draining the lake. We had a few calls on that, too. And we've had a lot of comments, very positive comments, on the little cottages that you built over on the lake. Those have drawn a lot of attention, so we appreciate what y'all did to that very unsightly place. All right, is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this property? Okay, all right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Hope you're having a blessed night.
We are from our ponce. We are right behind 103 Circle and the Burns Road. We have been in business for about, I'd say 12 years this year now.
Oh, my bad, I'm sorry. My name is Kevin Ricarte. We reside in 220 Kendall Lane, and we also operate a commercial tire shop on 845 Bankhead Highway. I have, we have been in business for about 12 years. Love it, love serving the community. Never wake up without a smile on my face to see you guys, whatever problem you have, and we are happy here to fix it.
We are opposed because we have had a history with the residential back there in order of us working and the calls to you guys about us, about noise and stuff like that. And we just think that with these new projects being built, you guys will have a lot more calls about our business and stuff growing, because we are only growing with our business. We also kind of figured this out on short notice, too. We digged this letter last week. And also, we feel our property value would be appreciated with everything going on right there. We're not saying it's bad, you know, stuff like that, but just the history of everything that's going on, we just, we just know. Your phone is gonna be ringing back to back to back to back with noise complaints, noise complaints. It'd be in a residential area. We would love to keep it commercial because our business is only growing from here. And you guys did mention earlier that Carrollton does have a great cultural stamp. I feel like we have a big, big imprint on that, and we only want to continue growing. We don't want to bother you guys with phone calls about us. We only want to help. We only want everybody to sleep well at night and wake up happy in the morning.
I got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So what time do y'all close?
We close at 6:00, but sometimes we stay late for after-late projects, stuff we cannot get throughout the day. Because you know how sometimes it is. Vehicles, sometimes they're pesky, sometimes they're easy. One broken bolt can lead to a three-day ordeal. One broken bolt can lead to a three-day ordeal. Yes, ma'am.
Could you be just a little bit more specific on the complaints? Obviously, I'm new to the council position, but I did campaign in that area and spent a lot of time back there and did talk to residents in that neighborhood, and that was not mentioned to me. I did not hear any noise complaints, negativity about any of the businesses.
I have one personal that I had to deal with one time. They got mad at me because I had a project in the back, I had a '69 Mustang roller that I got. I had it sitting there, because, you know, time is busy till I get to it, and I got told from the residential that we look like a junkyard. I'm like, I'm sorry, it's just my roller project being there, you know, it's about, just decided that it'll be okay, wouldn't be like an ISO and stuff like that. You know, sometimes we got our scrap containers back there. We've heard people complain about that to us, maybe not to y'all. We have had just, you know, tires stacking up out the way and everything like that, because mainly our business on the, you know, where we operate is so busy, and we need room in the back. We just, the last thing we need is you guys getting called left and right, just from us. I'm not sure if they told y'all or anything, but we personally have experienced that.
I got another question.
Yes, ma'am.
So how long do y'all keep the tires back there, and how fast do y'all dispose of them?
I go through three containers a month, scrap tires. Yes, sir, it's a blessing. It's like dirty dishes. You may not think about it at the moment, but it's a blessing.
So you put the tires in the containers?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And we chain them up, and the looks open, and then we got tires that, you know, for the public, that we sell, that we keep under a thing, that way, you know, rain and water, stuff like that. We try to get it moving in and out quick, you know. That's where the noise and everything is. It's just us movement, 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 you know.
I've been over there the last two or three days, because something's in my tires, so you're doing good business.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I didn't know what to do, but y'all fixed me up.
Yes, ma'am.
So I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I just asked Mr. Brooks if he'd had any calls.
I think I got one about two and a half years ago, and I called Mr. Ricarte, and he checked on it and took care of it, but it was something in the front. It wasn't something in the back. It was-
Yeah, but that one was the cross signs that got left.
No, we don't, we don't get any complaints about you guys or your business.
I got you. Mainly it's been personal with us. They like try to tell us this and that, and you know, last thing we need is people moving in next door and feeling uncomfortable, because we're working, you know. We would love to keep it commercial, because we are only growing as well.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition of the project? Okay. Do you have a buffer back there, Mr. Preston?
Yes, ma'am, if you, can you go back? You don't know? Okay. On the plat, there's a revised plat, oh, there, yep, there it is. Each, like, the biggest lot is about 6,000 square feet. I think there's 60 feet from the back of the house to that back property line back there.
Okay.
On the ones on Carroll Circle.
Okay.
And then the Burns Drive, one thing we also did is because of the traffic there, we're putting one entrance with a shared driveway, just to reduce the pullout, just to make it more safe. And I do hear their opposition, and I'm a customer, too, and they do a great job. I bought two sets of tires from these guys. They're incredible, incredible business in our community, but I think, I think people will actually enjoy living here. I mean, we've seen a great response from, it is in close proximity to the Green Belt. We are gonna put a sidewalk, a sidewalk all the way around the perimeter. It's gonna be a nice green space there. And I will also would argue that there's, you know, Bankhead generates a lot of noise anyway, because people are driving down that road. So I think when you move there, you're kind of use, you know you're expecting to hear a little bit of noise.
Yeah, okay. Because their property backs up and adjoins your property.
It's actually on the, like, the left side, so that, I guess that would be the east side, yeah, right, not there, but actually on the other, the other side, right there, their property. So they have, they have an access point to Carroll Circle right there, but I think their office building is actually, faces Bankhead.
Right, yeah. Just remember from when the nursery was there, they had the greenhouses and things in the back.
And they've done a good job cleaning that up, too, back there.
This number 845, if we're looking at the tax map, I guess, or the site plan, because it's not the property that's has Dondermark's trademark, only it's the one beside it that has access all the way to Carroll Circle, is that correct? It's the one next door.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. So there'd be one house that would actually join their property.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Preston. Or you have a question?
I do.
Okay.
Would it be possible, I guess this is an attorney question, would it be possible that we impose a condition that requires new property owners to waive any nuisance claim from the adjoining property?
This is a common problem where you have sort of encroachment of residential on existing commercial. And I think we're, one of the later rezoning requests will have a similar discussion, but yeah, it would be possible to impose a notice on the real estate records and a waiver of claims for a nuisance against the existing commercial property owners, so that you couldn't have residential moving in next door and complaining about a condition that's already there.
Yeah, okay.
Well, if we make a motion to approve the zoning change, can we make that a part of it?
You can.
All right.
I got one more question.
Okay.
So tire shop, is there any kind of, anything in our codes about their hours of service?
There's noise ordinances in this city that have, you know, time of day, but they're later, if I'm not mistaken.
We basically kind of had, basically like an umbrella noise ordinance that says it can't be a nuisance. It's very vague, it doesn't get into detail. There are some times of operation for like construction and things like that, but just for the business itself, that they would just fall under that umbrella noise ordinance that basically says you can't be a nuisance to your property, but to your neighbors.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, now, does that include the waiver?
I thought I'd let Bob, you know, add whatever he's-
I would just add the comment that I made there about them signing something that they know they're moving in next to a commercial property.
Okay, so, Mr. Ledbetter, you want to amend your motion to include that?
I wasn't the one that made the motion.
Oh, Stacy, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I amend the motion to approve.
All right, okay, and you will second it, Mr. Ledbetter?
I will second it.
All right. So we have a motion to approve with a stipulation to the property owner that they stipulate that they've been made aware of the possible nuisance of noise when purchasing the property.
Saying the waiver, right.
Yeah. All right, so I have a motion, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is annexation and rezoning requests for 14 Hayes Mill Road, 104 and 0 Martin Cemetery Road of 109.25 acres from the county ER to the city with estate residential one-acre lots, ER 3 estate residential three-acre lots, and the applicant is Mr. Jeff Camp.
Yes, the Planning Commission reviewed this request at their March meeting, and just to quickly go through it, they were requesting actually two estate residential zoning designations, one for one-acre minimums south of Martin Cemetery Road on the south side, and on the north side, ER 3, which are three-acre estate lot minimums. The Planning Commission reviewed this request. They did recommend denial of this request, five to zero at their March meeting. We have had a fair amount of discussion about this, I know at the work session, and I did want to include some proposed conditions should you choose to make a motion to approve the annexation and rezoning. Number one, that the developer establish an enforceable declaration of covenants and restrictions, and they shall establish a property owners association with a right and obligation to enforce such, enforce such covenants and restrictions prior to the issuance of building permits. Number two, the architectural conditions dated 4/8/2024, and these were emailed to you, but I'm gonna hand them to you anywhere. That those conditions be binding and included in the covenants. Number three, a 200-foot structure buffer shall be required along all lot lines adjacent to the city of Carrollton Lift Station. This would be applicable on those lots that are proposed on the north side of Martin Cemetery Road. Number four, that the developer be required to record a notice of the presence of a city of Carrollton Lift Station in the real estate records for all lots located within 1,000 feet of the lift station with acknowledgement that the station from time to time will produce offensive odors. And I did email this to you guys. Do y'all need a copy of this as well?
We're good.
And the applicant's here, if you have any questions.
Okay. Mr. Camp, do you want to address the council?
Hello, thank you all for letting us present tonight. My name is Jeff Camp. I have a business partner here, Paul Ozakis. I reside at 8720 Rose Avenue, Douglasville. Even though I'm a Douglasville native, I have roots deep back into Carrollton. I was born at Tanner back in 1964, and have ran a business out of Villarica for about 20 years. And I'm currently still stationed out of Villarica, and we currently are working in the Carrollton area. But as Erica had mentioned, we've got three tracks that we're requesting to rezone and annex into the city. One is a 10-acre partial, one is a 98-acre partial, and the other one's a 33-acre partial, and we're asking for, on our tracks, which is the 98 and the 33, we're asking for a total of 30 lots. And I think you guys had saw where our covenants and restrictions were, we're pretty strict on ourselves, because we do want to keep the value of the homes up. They're not large homes, but they will be nice homes, and we're holding ourselves to high standards there.
Okay.
And I would say price points minimum would be in the 5, 550s up.
And I'm just, as a real estate person, so I'm Paul Ozakis, 3500 Rain Tree Court in Douglasville. So what, our whole plan for this is, you know, we're doing exactly what we would think somebody would want in that area. Everybody seems to come in here and fight density, and they want all these houses and all these rooftops. We're gonna have larger lots, you know, none of the build-to-rent stuff, no townhomes, no apartments. We're doing a higher-end product, and, you know, people want to downsize, but not downgrade. I'm on the board with Dr. Kelly from West Georgia, and I had a conversation with him, and he said, that's exactly what I want. I said, what do you mean? He goes, I live in 7,500 square feet now, and it's just me and my wife. He goes, but I don't want to drop down to 2,500 or 3,000 square feet if it's not in a good area. So that's exactly what we're doing. So, you know, we feel like this is a great plan for that area, you know, and there were, you know, a lot of negative rumors on Facebook that we were trying to do this and that. We've, we're doing everything right here. We are difficult on ourselves. We want to make sure it's a high-end product, and, you know, development costs are very, very high, so when you have a 100-acre piece of property, everybody's trying to get as many rooftops as they can, and we're not, we're not seeking that. We're seeking very, very little, so we know, we think we're handling it the right way, and we would take recommendations. And I know we talked to Erica when we got here, and there were a couple of things on there that she added, and it was stuff that we, that we were okay with to start with.
I've got a question for you. I've had several phone calls about this rezoning and annexation, and, you know, how far along are you at this point with the environmental study as far as getting approval for septic tanks on some of this? I know, I know you probably aren't complete with that, because you don't have the request that you've asked for, but have you already started the process of-
We have, we're still, obviously, you know, and that's something that's environmental health handles, you know, of course, that's way out of our, you know, we had some negative comments, you know, at the zoning that are, that the, you know, the soils are bad and soil is bad. They're not bad. If they are, environmental health's gonna let us know, and they're gonna tell us what we need to do or what we can't do, and we'll adjust to that, so we're not trying to shove anything down anybody's throat by any means. We think, we think the few tests that we've done, we think are headed in the right direction.
We've done extensive tests on the 33-acre tract, and we've turned an initial plan into environmental health and got comments back today, so we are gonna have to make some adjustments. So we're confident we can get our seven lots that were proposed. If we lose a lot, we lose a lot, but we're, we're pretty confident we can get those seven lots.
Okay.
And that's seven lots on 33 acres, so it's not a, we're not trying to put 50 houses in.
Yeah, almost five acres per house, so, yeah.
And your pump stations on that property as well, so we'd like y'all to move that if y'all don't require it. I'm just kidding.
Yeah, the mayor and I just happened to be talking this morning and took a ride out to the pump station so that we could, you know, see for ourselves exactly. Most of the time, the gate's been locked. I've been by there a few times and haven't been able to access the property, but today we got lucky and rode down, and, you know, unless you were within, you know, 25 feet of the actual pump, we didn't have any smell at that time this morning, and we talked to the gentleman that's in charge of that facility, and he enlightened us about the noise that is very minimal, with the exception of, I think he said, 30 minutes a week-
Yeah.
-that the generator runs, because generators have to run to, you know, function properly, maintenance. And so there's 30 minutes a week that the generators do run, and it's very rare for them to have a power outage there that doesn't get rectified within about an hour, and so that would be, also be a time that the generators wouldn't run. So it was good to, you know, go out there and, you know, get a hands-on view and hear from somebody that's there all the time about what, what the noise factor and the, you know, the smell factor is out there, so.
And the, you know, the property, too, was on the market for a while, so it wasn't, you know, it didn't, you know, get on the market and go into contract the next day, you know. It took us a little while to make that happen, so I didn't know, you know, all of a sudden this is kind of blown up into a big deal. You know, anybody could have bought it.
Sure, sure. Okay, well, thank you.
Okay. All right, anything else you want to tell us? Nope. Is there anybody else in favor of the project? Want to speak?
I should have got some of those debate kids. I didn't know that they were gonna be here that I would have brought.
You're right, you missed your chance.
Yes, good evening, I'm James Christian, 445 Bivens Road. I own the 10.6 acres that's proposed in the proposal, and me and my family are looking to invest into the property, so I'll make it short and sweet. We're definitely for it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So he owns this 10 acres? Oh, Hayes Mill, okay, all right. Anyone else? Anyone else to speak in favor of it? All right. Do we have anyone here to speak in opposition?
Mayor and city council, my name is Patrick Malloy and my family and I own 65 acres on Martin Cemetery Road adjacent to the parcel that's in question. And we reside, by the way, at 951 Cedar Street in Carrollton. I'm opposed for several reasons, which I would like to elaborate and I'll do so quickly. The purchaser purchased this tract of land several months ago and it was in the county. And I understand that the proposed plan is closely consistent with the current county development, lot size and codes. And so my question is, why change to the city? The company that I work with has built 7,000 homes in Atlanta and we have zoned and planned over 100,000 home sites in Atlanta and Savannah. I understand growth very, very well and I support growth, but in areas where it is appropriate. Carrollton needs both workforce housing and luxury housing and high-density development should take place where residents can access all the great things that this cool little city has to offer. Our downtown, our interesting retail, our civic parks, our amphitheater, our cultural arts center, and most of all, our green belt. Density should not take place in areas where the growth would be inconsistent with the character and nature of the existing homes, nor should density increases take place where the direct access roads do not support increased traffic. Martin Cemetery Road has no stormwater control, no curb and gutter, it's a very narrow road, it is unlit, and it has an old bridge. Simply changing the boundary line on a map does not address any of these physical shortcomings. Most importantly, once this land is annexed into the city, 12 months later, the applicant or any subsequent owner has the right to come before the city for a density request. And given the size of the parcel, they could seek approval for a 300-home subdivision. If the proposed plan is truly similar to the current county zoning conditions, why do we want to introduce the risk that this could even happen? I speak for two families tonight. My family, the Malloy family, Carol and myself, and our two adult kids who love to hunt and fish on this property and we plan to build one home there. And I also speak for my cousin, Laura Richards, who owns 56 acres that is adjacent to me on Martin Cemetery Road. Along with our neighbor who is here tonight to oppose as well, the three of our families own 272 acres and that is roughly one-half of the total road frontage on both sides of the road on Martin Cemetery Road. We want to build a home for our family there because we enjoy the rural characteristics that exist today. All three of our families own land on Martin Cemetery Road in the county, but we also, all three, have significant land holdings in the city of Carrollton. We have paid taxes, we have created jobs, I might add thousands of jobs, we have invested in public infrastructure, we have given easements to the city to support city projects. Carol and I even gave a water easement to the city across our own property at Martin Cemetery Road to help build and support a technical campus that although I don't enjoy seeing, I realized it was very important for the growth of the city to support that activity. We are all strongly opposed to the annexation as it introduces the risk of a high-density neighborhood in the future. I have been assured by members of this council that this is not happening, the increased density, and if it did come before them, they would deny such application. I believe the members of the council, but why introduce that risk? I'm worried about what happens in 12 months in our city, but I am much more worried about what happens in 10 years when none of us that are standing here tonight or seated here tonight are in positions of authority. My family has been in Carrollton for generations, not years, and I understand the temptation of an increased tax base. Carol nor I have ever, ever, ever opposed any density increases ever in the city of Carrollton, even on the street where we have lived for 30 years. I feel strongly enough against this annexation and the potential risk that it would bring to our county, to our city, that I want to really encourage the mayor and the council to make the tough decision, the tough decisions that will protect Carrollton for the next 50 years. In addition, we did receive a full denial from planning and zoning. And further, you cannot zone price. So despite the great intentions of the developer, who I actually like and I think is a good guy, I do not think that the city council can have with any confidence a price guarantee on homes because we don't zone price, we're only zoning square footage. So thank you very much for your time tonight, I appreciate it.
We're at 5 minutes and 16 seconds remaining on opposition comments.
It won't take you that long. I'm John Polk, 805 Hayes Mill Road. I am a developer, as y'all all know, I've sat before you. We've got a 32-lot development on Maple Street. I want to call some concerns to this plat that's here. I had a call with the people at the city depart, I mean, the county or state, I should say, Department of Health and Resources, and the developer here has only presented to them the north 32 acres. Pardon me? North 32 acres. The south 80 acres has not been presented, but when I brought to their attention the plat that was provided to you all in the annexation and zoning, the comment was made to me, "No way. 46% of the property is in flood zone. 46% of it is in state waters." So there's a real issue there and then if they are going to do one-acre lots, which I just heard them say, then it's going to require city sewage. It requires in the county 20,000 square feet of your lot available for your septic. And most of these lots here, I know we talk about it, is unacceptable for the septic fields. The other thing is, is that this property adjoins the technology park, of which the city of Carrollton and county paid me 1.1 million for wetlands and streams mitigation. This property's going to require the same thing. I've already had a conversation with the Corps, I've already sent it down to them. So before this is approved, I want you to understand something. There's going to be major restrictions on any other wetlands in any stream encroachment. I don't believe that this thing will support more than 16 lots. And honestly, I don't understand why we're here before the city of Carrollton. As Patrick said, this really is a county issue. So I'll leave that with you for your suggestion, but I hope that you'll vote denial.
Anyone else here to speak in opposition?
There's two and a half, two and a half minutes left.
Hello, I'm Julia Curran. I currently live at 80 Buffalo Creek Road. I purchased my slice of heaven from my parents, John and Tammy Polk. They are currently building a home on Martin Cemetery and, as y'all know, not too long ago, we tried to take that parcel of land that we own and turn it into a shooting range and event venue that was not passed due to the zoning. It was proved during this case that the road could not handle the traffic, it would ruin the ecosystem in the agricultural area. So using this case, it will show that rezoning for a subdivision proposed for this area from Martin Cemetery Road and Hayes Mill Road should not be passed. I'm opposed to it being rezoned into the city because we do not need houses on one-acre tracts. We currently live in the area and we should maintain and uphold the county and the homes and the homes that they currently should want to build should be on four-acre lots. I'm asking for consideration for this from y'all in order to keep the county in the county and not take money from the county school system and not ruin the agricultural area that we currently have.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else to speak against this property being...
I'm Steve Fuller, I'm the District 4 Commissioner for Carroll County. I live at 904 Clem Lowell Road and I'm not going to repeat everything that they just said because it looked like they were reading my notes. I will say, if you, before you make a decision on this piece of property, you need to talk to Jake Holloway. He's at the, he's at the Health Department. I called him today and I'm going to give you the Cliff Notes version. Little spots of good dirt. That's what I got from him, on the north side. Little spots of good dirt. They have nut, or I got it backwards. That's right. You know, the south side, they don't have anything on the south side. So I think, I think there needs to be a conversation here before you proceed. Remember back to 2009? Everybody here remember 2009? Did you go past this in 2009? That bridge was underwater for what, two days?
Yep.
Two or three days. That bridge was underwater for two or three days. That jagged line that runs around the edge, that's not the 100-year flood mark, that's the flood plain. So I'm 71 years old, I've seen 300-year floods in my lifetime. So this is something you really need to consider before you proceed with this. Thank you.
Okay, time's up. Any questions or any... Do you want to rebut Mr. Camp or Mr. Ozakis, anything that's been said?
So that, just to make sure, you can't add anything to it, but the questions that have been posed is why change it to the city and also 46% of the property is in a flood zone and the Health, Health Commissioner, Health Department has said little spots of good dirt, the rest has been basically wanting to keep it, county wanted to keep it agriculture. So we're requesting to annex into the city because of the schools districts, which everyone knows Carrollton's got some of the best schools in the state. School districts, schools drive values and that's, that's our, that's why we want to get into the city. The flood area, I don't know about 46% of that over there, but, you know, we're, we're asking for 23 lots. If we have to go down a few lots, but I don't think we're going to lose any lots over on that side. But again, soils dictate what we can do. So we, we don't have anything to do with that. We'll turn in our plan. If the soils aren't good for that number of lots that we're asking for, then they'll reduce them down and we'll, we'll just have to reduce them down and we're willing to do that, that's what it takes. Same on the 33-acre tract. And if we, on the 33-acre tract side, if we need to tie some of those into sewer, Tommy Holland has said that we could tie some of those in. So we will do some additional soils testing over there. We've done some pretty extensive testing, but we'll continue to do some more testing. So we feel, again, we feel confident and again, but the state drives that, we don't drive it. So...
As far as, as far as the density that was brought up, Patrick brought up, just deny it. Just say, you know, don't, don't approve any more than what we're, than what we're going for.
We're asking for the 30 lots and that's all we're, is not our intent to ever come back in and ask for more than that. Someone had mentioned about ag, just, you know, if there's so much of that properties in flood plain, it's, it's never going to be good for agricultural. I mean, it's, to me, that's the country, that's the country in the city that's ideal for what we're requesting. We feel like, you know, we know there's a pump station on the property, on the 33 acres, but the pros far outweigh the cons there. So we're, it's a risk that we're willing to take and we know that we have to disclose that there's a pump station on the property and we don't have any issues with that. I think maybe that addresses the...
You addressed the concerns that they brought forward and then just the traffic issues that they would face. I think I heard that a couple of times, I wrote that down.
Where are we at with the soil test? I was confused by that.
So we've had a level three soils and we'll just, we'll proceed to go with a level four or we'll, we'll go after, you know, additional soils testing. But again, if we lose a lot or two, then, you know, that's, we can't get it out of there, that's, that yield, that's what we're willing to do. Or we'll tie in the sewer. We have the option to do that on lots five and six.
Are we at the point of having a full site plan?
We have a conceptual currently that we've turned in for both, both properties.
Okay.
You guys have that in hand.
Mr. Camp, what, what kind of permits are, Mr. Polk had mentioned the Corps of Engineers, these kind of people, I mean, do y'all have to contact those people?
I'm not, I'm not familiar with, with that. I just, I realize that we have to stay out of the flood plain. We're not, we're not impacting the flood plain, it is not our intent, in fact, to pack the flood plain.
Okay.
So I mean, by law, we can't, you know, we can't do that.
Right, okay. But you don't have to have approval or anything from anybody?
Not to my, not, as long as we're not impacting the flood plain.
Okay.
We're not doing any kind of encroachment in the flood areas.
All right. Any other questions?
Yeah, I got a question. What you mean, I don't understand about spot, some spots are good, is that what you're saying, that some spots are bad, that you can't bill on it, that's what you...
Well, we would just have to do additional testing to determine, and it's not us, it's a third party that does that testing. A soil scientist would do the testing and then he would turn it to a civil engineer and the civil engineer will draw up a site plan based off of the soils to determine if, if we have enough good soils. And if we don't, the county's not going to approve it.
Right, okay.
The state's not, so.
How many lots, in the lots that you're talking about, that you could access sewer are all on the north side of Martin Cemetery, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's right.
And how many lots could you potentially access sewer on?
We could, we could all of them if we had to do that, but that's not our intent. We don't, we don't feel like that, we think we can find enough good soils there. But if it pushed come to shove, if we had to do, we had to access sewer, we, Tommy Holland has given us permission verbally to do that.
I got another question. I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
And I didn't clearly hear y'all state about the traffic going down through there when everybody's talking about the traffic. Is it going to, I mean, I know you can't determine how many people are going to be going up and down the road, but if that's a concern, how will you address that?
So if we were, you know, we're, we're proposing 30 lots. If we were proposing 300 lots, I could see absolutely how we could impact traffic, but I mean, we're going to have a minimum impact with 30, 30 homes.
All right. Any other questions or concerns? All right. Thank you, Mr. Camp, thank you, Mr. Ozakis.
Thank you.
All right, I will entertain a motion for the request of 14 Hayes Mill Road and 104 and 0 Martin Cemetery Road.
I'd like to make a motion that this property be annexed into the city and that the plats that have been presented be considered, be built on.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, the next item on the agenda is annexation and rezoning request of Martin Cemetery Road from county to ER 3 estate residential three-acre lots. And this, okay... And this, okay, I want to ask that if you are exiting, please do so in a quiet manner.
Yes, the next item on your agenda is the, a companion annexation request. I can be really loud. A companion annexation request that goes along with the annexation request that you just approved. By state law, we cannot create islands and the city lift station that is located on that thirty-three acre tract is in unincorporated Carroll County. And this particular property at this time will need to be annexed in so that we can be in compliance with state law. And we recommend approval of this annexation.
All right. Do I have a motion to, is there anybody here to speak in opposition? They left. Okay.
This one actually has to happen, so even if they did.
Yeah, all right. Do I have a motion to annex the, from the county to ER three estate, three residential acre lots? Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The last, oh, this is a resolution, I'm sorry. I started saying the last item on the agenda. Resolution oh-three twenty-four, the UDO amendment for vape shops, section one-point-zero-nine-point-zero-zero and two-point-zero-three-point-zero-three and two-point-zero-four-point-two-nine.
Yes, the UDO amendment on your agenda this evening does relate to vape shops. It essentially separates out vape shops from other retail uses or general retail uses in our land use table. It also defines what makes a vape shop. Please keep in mind, these are uses that are dedicated for really the sole purpose of either selling vape-related items, vape juice, things like that. This wouldn't impact convenience stores that currently sell vapes. The planning commission did review this request. The changes in the UDO that you guys asked to see during the work session have been made and so we did make that change from the C two, the general commercial as well. And that does, that is reflected in the resolution you have before you. The planning commission initially recommended unanimous approval of this and you guys did review this at your work session, but there should be all the changes that you guys wanted in there.
This is resolution oh-three twenty-two-four, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Carrollton, state of Georgia, to amend section one-point-zero-nine-point-zero-one definitions and to amend section two-point-zero-three-point-zero-three table of land uses and amend section two-point-zero-four-point-zero-zero supplemental standards for specific uses of the unified development ordinance of the city of Carrollton, Georgia to define and regulate vape shops, whereas the city of Carrollton, Georgia is vested with substantial power to regulate the use of property for the purposes of maintaining health, moral, safety, security, peace, and general welfare of the city and whereas zoning is a matter of, with the purview of the city pursuant to Article nine, section two, paragraph four of the Constitution of the United States, I mean, the Constitution of Georgia of nineteen-eighty-three and whereas pursuant to the authority on September tenth, two thousand and seven, the mayor and council adopted a unified development ordinance herein referred to as the UDO, which consolidated amended certain chapters, articles, provisions, and appendix in the code of ordinances, the city of Carrollton, Georgia, that govern the use and development of real property within the city. And whereas the unregulated operation of vape shops within the city of Carrollton is a threat to public health, moral, safety, security, peace, and general welfare. And whereas in several Georgia communities, vape shops are regulated separately than other retail operations. And whereas the mayor and council find in the public interest to make changes to the UDO to define and regulate vape shops in the city and now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of Carrollton do hereby amend Article one and Article two of the UDO as follows. The definition of a vape shop?
It's really just the land use table and the, and the definition.
That's just the language. So do I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments?
How's this, yes, how's this affect somebody that wants to open up a new vape shop?
They will not be able to open up a new vape shop.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. Okay, item number ten on our agenda, board appointment, the Board of Development Appeals.
So, no, I stuttered. You run that commission and it's been your show all night, so I'm just going to let you finish this off.
Well, I had to take a brief break a minute ago, so I got a little bit distracted. I apologize. Yeah, so there are two appointment, there are two appointments that need to be made to the Board of Development Appeals this month. Emily Cole has been on the Board of Development Appeals for quite some time. I'd have to do a little research to see how many years, but I would say probably well over a decade. And she does a great job and she has agreed to continue to serve. Peggy Philpott has asked to be replaced off the board. She's been a great member, but due to some health reasons, she feels like maybe there might be a better person to serve and she wants to give someone else a turn. We did reach out to Suzanne Machelli and she has agreed to serve if you would like to replace Peggy with Suzanne. The Board of Development Appeals have also recommended her as well, so.
Okay. And is there a second person?
Well, Emily and Suzanne. So reappoint Emily, I'm sorry.
Reappointed Emily.
Yeah, reappoint Emily and then, and then Peggy, she, she needs to come off. She wants to come off her health.
Oh, okay. All right. Are there any other nominations for this board? Okay. Hearing none. Do I have a motion to reappoint Ms. Emily and the appointment of Suzanne Machelli?
So moved.
Y'all do that in unison, okay.
We're good.
Y'all are great.
We practiced.
All right. Do one of you want to make, Jackal made the motion?
Bible second.
Bible second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign.